Last week, we kind of nailed down our guaranteed maximum price. And you'll see an agenda item for your approval there. Just as a reminder, the total project budget was $46.1 million. And that included not only construction, but design, our permitting fees, our testing fees, and what we had held back were contingencies. And we had some good fortune when we worked with Burn to come up with what our base cost would be. And if you'll remember, when we were going through the process, we had broken out two very important ad alternates, which were the parking lot, the entire parking lot, and the oval lawn or the north lawn, with our base being the building and the initial parking lot that was going to be located near the senior center. So we're fortunate, we got our base design, and through some of the contingencies that we've withheld, we are going to be able to, at this point, execute the north lawn and the entire parking lot. So we will be able to execute the master plan for the site, which we're really excited about. So we'll ask you to approve the guaranteed maximum price, but also authority for us to execute up to $3 million in additive alternates, including the north lawn and the entire parking lot, with some of the others that we have lingering, that as we work through our construction contingency, if that fund becomes available, and it becomes available on the timeline of which we have to tell the contractor, we'll execute it. We have got some priorities here that we want to work ourselves through, but that's why we're going to be asking for the approval for the extra $3 million. That is within the initial budget, we will not be exceeding the $46.1, but it will be being able to move forward in a timely manner to get a look at those. So you'll see that come up for you. So that's the great news, we're going to be able to build out the entire site. And sometimes when you get what you asked for, you've got to give up a little bit, right? So a little bit of what's going to happen is because we need the dirt which exists under the buildings that are there now, we're going to have to close those facilities a little bit earlier than we had initially thought when we were going through the design process, where we thought that we might be able to keep them open for a while, that's just not going to be the case. But fortunately, we've got a great team on the parks and recreation staff that has been working furiously to make sure that no one is displaced and we get to continue programs. Excuse me. So our Memorial Park Recreation Center programs will move over to Herring Recreation Center, we'll continue to have some of our classes over at the MCL Grand, and then we'll continue our working relationship with LISD throughout the summer, and next summer to host camps like we're doing this year. The Senior Activities Center, we've got a good community partner in the Music City Mall who, we had kind of been targeting for if we had to move out during a portion of the construction, we might move over there. And when we found out that we had the opportunity to execute the entire project, we said, hey, can we come a little earlier? And they said, how early? I said, well, later this month. And they said, yes, that'd be great. So we're working with the mall to secure a place that's about 8,000 square feet, it's on the second floor up near Macy's, and I'll tell you a little bit about that. But we'll begin the Senior Activities Center operations there on July 23rd. In the interim, we'll move the Senior Activity Operations to the Community Room, which is across from my office, where everybody does early voting. And we're going to be, we've been working with the Senior Activity, I'm sorry, the Senior Advisory Board to add some activities to bring back some trips, so I think it's going to be a really good move for everybody. And then the recreation center staff, some of them might be a little displaced, and they'll be officing out over with us. One of the reasons that we really want to do this is existing or working or playing or whatever in the middle of a construction zone is really disruptive. And so while this at first sounded like, oh, we need to move the seniors, we need to move the recreation participants sooner than we thought, I think it's going to end up being a good thing, because no one likes the dust that swirls around during construction. And I don't know anybody who likes the beefing when major equipment's backing up. Except the person, yeah. Well, now I've met you. There was one off, it had to be, right? So just a little bit of information so that you can share with anybody who might have some questions, is we'll be using entrance number four at Music City Mall as our main entrance for the senior center. It'll be located, our site's going to be located on the second floor up near Macy's. And the good thing about it is there's a really close parking entrance here that isn't used a lot, and we'll be able to add some ADA parking spaces. But there's also a DCTA bus drop-off place there, which we haven't been able to secure for the site yet, so we're really, or the current site yet, so we're really excited about that. And we've also got an opportunity, working with DCTA, to see if we could have a temporary drop over here. So we're trying to work through those issues. If you've been to the mall, this is looking out what our suite will be, so if you've gone to get glasses at Vision Works or shopped at Macy's, or come to one of the lovely programs they host on Sunday afternoons, this will be our site from our suite. This is where the DCTA drop-off point is, down near the J.C. Penney's. And this is what the suite looks like on the inside. We have, you know, a large multipurpose space, we'll have a kitchen so that we're able to do our Meals on Wheels program and continue with congregate meal. I know, I know you like the tile in there, Mr. Gilmore, I can see it already.
How are we going to get them to come back?[382.27][382.29][laughter]
I don't know. I'll tell you what, Craig and his team have designed such an awesome place, everybody's going to flock to it the minute we open. But this is a pretty swank place. So we've got a large multipurpose room. The great thing is because it used to be a beauty school, there's two breakout classrooms, so we can continue to do those programs that kind of need a more intimate space. There's enough spaces for our staff offices and storage, and we're going to have a billiards room, which was very, very important. So we don't, we don't get to take two billiards tables, but we get to take our best one, and that seems to be enough. So we're excited that we have this opportunity to provide a space for the seniors so that throughout the duration of construction, they're not hopping around, with the exception of those two weeks where we're going to host them at the Community Room. And we met with them this afternoon, we met with the advisory board, and we've made a commitment to keep as many of their programs going at the Community Room as possible. They'll start there next Monday, and we'll run through the 20th there. And one of the things that we'll do is on Monday morning next week, we'll have staff at both of those facilities that if someone hasn't gotten the message, they don't know where to go, they'll direct them back to the Community Room, but also tell them about what's going to be happening at the mall. So we're excited about that. All right, so I've said a whole bunch, and I'm about to come to the fun part. Do y'all have any questions about this so far?
Did anybody at the meetings today have any questions that would be relevant to us?
So we had some questions about what our transportation options would be. For instance, we're not going to be able to host our ceramics class over at the mall because we need a place for the kiln to vent, so we're going to offer transportation from the mall to Herring at the times that that's scheduled. There were.
Restrooms.
Restrooms were part of the question, and there are, there's a set of restrooms that you can walk to in that suite, but there's also an entire bank just down the hall so that we can facilitate that. And they wanted to make sure that their congregate meals were going to continue. And while we're not quite sure if Meals on Wheels is going to help us, be able to help us at the Community Room for the next two weeks, they have committed to be at the mall. And we can talk about doing home delivery during these two weeks for the people that might be displaced if we can't offer it here. Hillary, anything else that she can think of?
Handicap parking.
Handicap parking, they wanted to, that's a good. They were a little worried that we have a whole bunch of ADA parking at the site, and we're going to be able to add to that. We've gotten a commitment from the mall to allow us to add 10. There are ADA parking spaces all around the perimeter, but the mall's been really great in working with us, so I think if we get to the point where it doesn't feel like enough, we can work on that. Anything else? No? Okay. So we're on for P-Nuckle, another quack on Wednesday. All right, so naming MGC. Yay, we're so excited.[592.79][592.81][laughter] Okay, all right. All right, so just to run out of the timeline, we came back in April 4th, and we pitched one name, and the council's like, well, you didn't have, you didn't give us enough. So how did you go back and give us some options to look at? And we said, great. And we figured from your comments that we needed a little bit more inclusion from the community on that. So on May 22nd, the council named a subcommittee to help us do that. Representatives from the 2025 Committee, Parks Board, City Council, Youth Action Council were represented on there. And in that term, right, just after, we sent out a questionnaire to representatives of each of those bodies. On June 11th, we had our first committee meeting, and we took 29 suggested names to two. And then last Tuesday, we had a meeting where those two names, we looked at potential logos for each one and taglines that might, you know, be able to go along with them, and that we would bring, bring them to you for review. And those were really fun meetings, and I think you would be really, really excited about the leadership that Mr. Sykes from the Youth Action Committee showed during, and being able to really articulate what he felt was a youthful name and view amidst people, you know, at least five years as senior.[685.54][685.56][laughter] But it was really good, there was good debate, there was consensus gained during, during the meetings. And so we have two, we have two names and two taglines to bring to you with some logos. And just, just a little bit of a reminder, and like, what's in a name? Remember that the Multi Generation Center is not a name, it's what the facility is, it's a descriptor of what goes on there. And we're looking for a memorable name that not only sparks interest in the center, but helps us market and gets people excited about going there and creating a brand for us. And as we went through these meetings and we took the information from the surveys, it really became important for us that the name, the logo, and the tagline would encompass the spirit of the center, working in the ideas that we had incorporated in the design in terms of our connection with nature, that it reflected where it came from in terms of the 2025 Plan and the Parks Master Plan, but also that it be energetic and alive, that it's something that we could all connect with and feel good about. So we came up with two names, and I'm going to introduce them to you with the associated logos. And the first one I'm bringing to you is Thrive. And the logo really hits home on all the elements that were incorporated into the design of the, of the center, but also what we've got going on in Louisville in terms of, you know, our Purple Martin, the river, the lake, our commitment to trees, and the sun, the wind, and really the word thrive, because that's what we want people to do when they step into the facility. It kind of talks about what we are becoming as, as a community. So we felt this one, immediately people gravitated to. Thrive was the top vote getter when we were just at the name point, and then this logo really hit home. Initially, it had circles just like these, and we were like, oh, that needs to be honed up a little bit so it looks more like a tree, but one of the things that we liked as a group was that eventually, this could become like the Nike symbol, we won't even need thrive, people will see this and think thrive, right? So we were really interested in that. Here's a rendering of what it might look like on the side of the building. As you walk in, just as a point of reference, this will be the main entry point, walking in from the parking lot, and the backside would be the corner where the Louisville sign is. This would be what it would look like on t-shirts, and then probably a lot of our marketing stuff. Thrive works really well for, for marketing, fitness programs, enrichment programs, you know, Arrive and Thrive can be one of our programs, we really, really like it, and we feel that this would do well for us. The next one that we, we chose, and it made, it rose again, was Rise.[889.22][889.24][laughter] And, and I've explained this, this before, is that we kind of really felt that this is a, it's a very clean logo, but Rise is kind of, is an indicator of what we feel the community is doing, what the building is, was that moment of us taking off and taking flight as a community came together, approved those big bond packages. And it does lend itself to some good marketing for us in terms of fitness programs, Rise and Shine, Early Risers, stuff like that. Initially, when we looked at it, it was a word, rise, with the, with the Purple Martin at it, and Mr. Ferguson had a good idea about having some way to show in negative space the flight path of the bird, which if you'll remember, when you, we looked at our art piece, has that flight path in it. So we felt pretty good about that coming forward. This is what it would look like on the side of the building, and this is what it would look like on t-shirt when we start our, our marketing material. Now, a couple of things for y'all to know and be aware of, we did our research in terms of the names and, and stuff. Thrive is, has some, okay, so this is going to be like, you know, you buy a new car and you've never seen that car on the road, and then you're in it and everybody has that car? All right, so now everywhere I go, I see the word thrive, and everywhere I go, I see the word rise. So that's just going to happen, right? So with thrive, there's a dietary supplement that's called Thrive right now, there's a...
A college commercial.
A college commercial that's using it. But overall, there's not really any conflicts with any similar centers or the like. With Rise, there is a, a group called Rise that works with disabled athletes. We work with them, we know, we knew about that, there's some synergy there. There is a small, private center called Rise in Rockwall, called the Rockwall Indoor Sports and Exercise Center, but it's small, it's privately owned. So we've got there, and then Mr. Ferguson pointed out, he typed the, each of the names into a translator, and thrive doesn't seem to mean anything bad in any other language, but there's one language where rise may offend a few people.[1047.83][1047.84][laughter] I'm not sure on that one. So that's where we are with those two names. Now, I can go on to show you what the taglines are, or we can discuss these a little more. They were getting close.
Did you do anything with just two color? Two color on both of them?
Two colors, I, I do have them, and I can send, send them out, I just didn't include them in here, but they each translate well. Because we put the outline here, it worked in both ways, and in both logos, it, there's not a problem. Do you want me to just go to the tagline stuff?
Let's go.
Go to the agenda.
Okay, we'll have to come back to this.
Okay.
Sorry, delay.
Okay, we're going to start with the dedication, Mayor Congressman Daniels, Paul Blackfels, Senator Flack, Councilor Thule, Proclamation, Congressman Gilmore. Down to Public Hearing One. Any questions? Public Hearing Two.
Mayor, I just wanted to point out, one, in order to pass, it requires a supermajority.
It requires what now?
A supermajority.
Okay, for what?
For it to pass.
For number one.
For you to overrule PNC.
You're going to remind us out there too. If I have anything on two? Okay, three? Down to consent? Five? Six? I fell through these fairly quickly. Seven? Nine? Regular hearings? Donna, we did get something from the building room or something?
I was just told that, Mayor, I was in a meeting to see.
I sent you a deal about it too. I got it, it was after five.
On the park development fee?
Yes, yes. Okay, item 11? And item 12, anything?
What do you do with 12 if we haven't finished the presentation? Have we finished it out there?
We could finish it out there, well, the part of, well, yes, we could finish it out there.
I'd like to see the whole presentation before I.
Okay, that's a good point.
Make a vote.
And come back and do that too?
Yeah, we could, we could just pick out the presentation out in the regular session at where we stop.
Okay.
We'll just go to the taglines, is that okay? Or do you want to do the question? Do I have to plug through the?
No, for the sake of the audience, just pick up where you introduced your two names.
Okay, the name is.
Yeah, so they don't go.
Okay.
What are we talking, where, how do we jump into this?
Okay.
So just give us the transition, give them the transition. That is? Okay, we'll reconvene at summer talks and council retreat.
No power? We're running expectations for the media hearing. We'll position screen for inside.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Constitution. The allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Who are you?
Some technical difficulties, someone may get to not knowing what they're just saying.
If I could invite up Mr. Ross Ling and the rest of the park board, you have another park board, is that easier? There we go.
In Seinfeld terminology, it's called a loud talker, so. Ah, okay, and park staff? If I could have all of you join us? And then anybody who's left in the audience, if you have an.[1397.24][1397.26][laughter] Park fans? I'm very pleased to be able to present this today. Bear with me, there's a lot of whereses on this one. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Louisville, Texas, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Louisville recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, and has made a commitment to protect our green centerpiece and extend the green so all of our residents are within a 10-minute walk to a park. Now therefore, ITJ, on behalf of Rudy Durham, Mayor of the city of Louisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month. We need to give all of these hardworking folks a huge round of applause.[1520.06][1520.08][applause] Euler, anyone? Rob, come on up.
TJ, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, appreciate it. So Stacy, thank you for the 32nd heads up to speak.[1541.12][1541.14][laughter] On behalf of the city and the park board and all these hardworking, dedicated volunteers, Stacy and TJ and the city, we thank you for this and certainly appreciate it. I've been on the park board now going on, I think, 10 years. Absolutely love our city parks, the investment that we're making into it, and the continual just upgrades and just added benefit to the citizens of Louisville.
One more. One more.
Please, feel free to do the pen around.
All right, all right, thank you all, I really appreciate it.
When you do the presentation, and Stacy does her presentation, you'll have to watch all of this.
Okay. What are we going to do? Just tell me. City Secretary?
Public hearing number one, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from local commercial district to multifamily one district on 1.13 acres located on the north side of Southwest Parkway, approximately 840 feet west of South State Highway 121 Business. The applicant desires to expand Autumn Breeze, the apartment complex adjacent to the north onto this property. PNC recommended denial by a vote of six to zero. A supermajority vote by the city council is required to approve this ordinance. We have two individuals here that have issued cards stating their opposition, Fred Schitzenberg, I'm so sorry if I mispronounced that, and Wanda Snitzenberg, again, sorry. We also have John Gillespie here to speak before the city council.
Okay, we'll take those in order they were called out, just. Were they, were they wanting to speak?
They do want to speak, but they have a PowerPoint presentation, and at this time we're trying to get it up on the screen because we've had some technical difficulties.
That's what you were trying to tell.
Yes, sir.[1691.45][1691.47][laughter]
Okay, uh, what are we going to do on that? Wait?
I don't know if we, they, I guess have a stick, they could actually use this, where's Chris, if they have a PowerPoint, can they, can we use it on this device?
If I put it in right here, I don't have any other way, it's going to block your view. We can do that if we want.
Or I guess we could get, how long is the PowerPoint, huh? If it's a short PowerPoint, we could take it, make a copy, and give it to the city council. That might be the easier route.
Do we have our president's PowerPoint, or do we not?
Yeah, we have technical difficulties, that's not working.
Okay.
My name is John Gillespie, I represent the owner of the property in question.
Can we get your address, uh, address for the record, please?
Name is John Gillespie.
Got that. And your, the address?
The, the address of the.
Your, your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, we, we own Autumn Breeze Apartments, and, and we bought that several years ago in 2014, and one of the things we noticed right away was that there was a problem with ingress and egress at the property, coming off of Business 121, so we bought this lot on Southwest Parkway so we could put in a second driveway which would allow ingress, egress on the property, and reduce the congestion on Business 121 from people leaving and entering the driveway, or leaving and entering the property, and. And, uh, once that was done, and the issue was corrected, we were trying to determine what to do with the lot. We put an easement on the lot for the driveway, so that would, that, that driveway would be in perpetuity for the residents. We, we commissioned a survey by SVN Commercial Real Estate, and they are the ones that prepared the PowerPoint that we're not able to show, but I've sent a copy to each of you. Hopefully you had a chance to look at it. And it was their determination that, uh, the, the best use of the property was to do in addition to the existing multifamily, not a new development, eighteen units that would be, what we believe is that the most attractive building on that side of Southwest Parkway. They looked at, uh, that office buildings in the general area on our street alone, on Southwest Parkway alone, there's two half-empty office buildings. There's also a car wash and, uh, a medical center and a fast-food place. So we feel like putting these eighteen units there, we, uh, we are hoping that you will consider that not as a new development, but as an addition to an existing development that would beautify the street. It would allow better walkability because we'd have a sidewalk out there. It would, uh, 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 it would generate more property taxes than a vacant lot would, or probably most any other commercial development. And, uh, and we, uh, and we also marketed the lot for about a year with another commercial real estate broker, and they've had zero interest in it, so it, it's not a highly developable site. It's, it's not an area that, uh, is attracted to other developers for any sort of mixed use or anything like that. So we feel like this would be a good use of the property, it would improve the appearance of the street, it would add walkability, it would, uh, add to the tax base in the area. I think if you look, those of you who are familiar with Autumn Breeze, if you look at the improvements we've made in that over the last five years since we've owned it, we've invested several million dollars in it, we've improved it significantly, we've added amenities for residents. We, we, we unilaterally decided to spend a hundred thousand dollars on the driveway, plus three hundred thousand dollars for the lot just to improve traffic flow. We have been, our corporate headquarters are in Lewisville. We've been in Lewisville for over twenty-five years. We own and develop multifamily properties throughout North Texas. We still own the first property we bought in nineteen-ninety, we're not flip, we're not flippers, we're here for the long run. We've done other developments on the lake in Lewisville in the past, so we feel like we're a good corporate citizen of Lewisville. We've been a good steward of Autumn Breeze Apartments, and we'd like to improve the appearance on Southwest Parkway by building eighteen units. Uh, we're proposing three-bedroom units. One of the things in the slideshow was, uh, there's a, there's a shortage of three-bedroom apartment homes in Lewisville, even though there's a lot of apartments, it's only four and a half percent are three-bedroom. So that's another factor would be providing housing for families in Lewisville. And one of these, they got the slideshow working. On the slideshow, one of the things SVN did was, was show, uh, views of some of the neighbors of that lot, and I think what you'll see is, you know, like I said, two half-empty office buildings. You'll, you'll see the garages from townhouses that are next door. You'll see, you know, a car wash, fast food, uh, and those are the garages from the townhouses. Just, that's the building we're proposing with parking behind it. That's one of the office buildings that's half vacant, and has been ever since we've owned Autumn Breeze, I think. That's another one that's half vacant. And that's, that's the lot that needs improving. There's the car wash. So, uh, what they, what I, what Sperry Van Ness was trying to show is that we are in the midst of multifamily, that that side of the street is all multifamily. It's either apartments, or it's townhouses, or it's businesses that are not attractive and have not proven to be successful from what we can tell, or they can tell. So our requests are, we respectfully request that you provide either a variance to the existing zoning or a new zoning to allow the addition to the existing property and help improve that street.
Do you have any more on your presentation that hadn't come up?
Well, those were the, that, they had a lot of filler in there, some of which we removed. Uh, yeah, but, uh, to me, those were the important points, is that there's a shortage of three-bedroom units. What's on the street now is typically not very attractive, the lot is not very attractive. Our property, Autumn Breeze, has been improved significantly. We would like the good neighbor for our property, and we're willing to invest another two and a half million dollars to create that good neighbor. But we need to have, have, have something that will, will help reimburse us for that two and a half million dollar investment we're gonna make, and the only thing that we could come up with was an addition to the existing multifamily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. There seems to be quite a bit of opposition from the neighbors in the area. Have you done anything to talk to them about their opposition and what you could do to make it better so that they wouldn't be opposed to your development?
We have not been alerted to any specific opposition, other than at the zoning, there was, uh, two speakers or three speakers that were opposed, their, their concern that they expressed at that time was, was, the only concern I, that made, that I understood was parking. They thought that there would be a shortage of parking, uh, with the additional units. They, I, I think at first they didn't realize that this new development also has parking. I mean, the city would require that, it was hidden behind the building, so they, they didn't recognize that. And I did have a survey done nightly at the existing Autumn Breeze Apartments to determine how many vacant spots there are on any given night. Our property manager, who lives on site, went out every night, and there was anywhere between forty to fifty or more vacant parking spots every evening. You know, and, and so, since that was the only objection that I recall being expressed, that's how we addressed that. If there was any other specific objections, uh, they were not raised, at least they were not made evident to me.
I mean, I was just wondering, after being denied by planning and zoning, y'all didn't do any outreach at all?
We did not do any outreach at all, other than normal signage and stuff. You know, we are willing to obviously modify the design if the neighbors would rather see balconies overlooking the street or parking in front of the street, I mean, we're, we're very flexible regarding that. But, uh, we were, I, we made the assumption that since we were designing what we thought was an extremely attractive building and a good use of the property, that, uh, that, that, that would be well-accepted. But if it's not, then if there's specific, you know, objections, we'd, we'd be glad to address those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
City Secretary, could you call up the next one in opposition?
They were only, um, indicating their opposition to the item, they did not wish to speak on the cards. Did you wish to speak now?
If they wanted to. The ones that were in opposition, do you want to speak? Okay. You can give me your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is, excuse me, Fred Switzenberg, I live at one-twenty, one oh-four Chelsea Court, which is directly across the street from this property. This gentleman said that he didn't have much opposition at the zoning, he had a lot of opposition at the zoning. This does not fit in with the design of that street at all. We've got businesses, they're all one-story businesses along that, his empty lot, he wants to put a three-story building on that lot, combined with one-story buildings along the street. Also, he showed pictures of the, uh, complex with the garages, there's also a brick wall between those, the street and those garages. It looks to me like he's planning on building this apartment building ten feet off the road. All of the businesses are off the road by twenty, thirty feet. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, are there any questions from the council at this time? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second to close the public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, public hearing is closed. Neil, you have anything?
Yes, um, and I, I'm gonna try to simplify this. First of all, the big concern is, uh, we've set a number of plans in motion, probably the biggest, best-known, twenty-twenty-five, and the issue, from my perspective, and I, and with full respect to the, those folks who showed up at the planning and zoning meeting, it looks like there were six or eight other people, is simply, uh, is not the direction that we're looking to, to go with, uh, additional multifamily. You know, whether there's a shortage of three-bedroom or not, I don't know. It doesn't weigh heavily in my mind. So, you know, I, I'm, I can't support it. Uh, I would be willing to make a motion, I'm a great believer in motions in the positive mode, so a vote, you would vote to, um, uh, deny the motion. If you're against doing it, you would vote in favor of the motion, if you're in favor of doing it. That makes the voting much more clarified, that's pretty much Robert's rules. So the motion would be to approve. Do you understand?
Nope. Say it again.
The motion is to approve. If you're in favor of approving, you vote to approve. If you wish to deny it, you vote to deny. That way the recorded vote is to deny.
That's not a motion.
Yeah.
At this time?
No, it is a motion at this time.
Which one? Are you moving to approve, or are you moving to deny?
I'm gonna move to approve.
You're gonna move to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
If you're not in favor, you will vote to, to deny.
Okay, so do we have a second? Motion dies. Uh, we'll go to the
Move to deny.
Do we have a motion to deny?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? No one? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Public hearing number two, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a communication tower located at the northern terminus of Fairway Drive, approximately three hundred and ninety feet north of East Jones Street and west of North Mill Street. The proposed hundred-and-twelve-foot communication tower will be located on the north side of an existing electrical substation. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. Available for questions is Richard Lukey, Planning Director, and Chris Schmidt with T&amp;P Brazos.
Okay, both available for questions. Does anybody have a question of the applicant or staff? Okay. Uh, we have a motion to close the public hearing, move to close.
Second.
We have a motion, second to close the public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion, second to approve, any discussion? Okay, counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a communication tower on approximately twenty-four-point-six-one-nine acres, legally described as Lot sixteen, Block eight, Fairway Business Park Edition, located at the northern terminus of Fairway Drive, approximately three hundred and ninety feet north of East Jones Street and west of North Mill Street, and Zone Light Industrial District and Warehouse District, providing for repealer severability penalty and effective date declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Public, public hearing number three, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for an auto display and sales facility in five associated variances on point-eight-eight-three acres located at nine-oh-one and nine-oh-three South Mill Street. The request is for the expansion of the existing Mosley Auto Dealership and for the following five variances. One, to reduce the control of access on seventy-five feet along South Mill Street. Two, to allow a variable width landscape buffer. Three, to allow ornamental trees in the required landscape buffer. Four, to reduce the required stacking depth to twenty-four-point-three feet. And five, to allow a six-foot board-on-board wood fence. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance and variances as set forth in the caption. Richard Lukey, Planning Director, is available for any questions.
Okay. Does the council have any questions at this time? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve, is there any discussion?
Just, just briefly, um, I can tell that this applicant spent a lot of time working with staff to, to figure out how to make the best improvement on their space, uh, so I really appreciate them, uh, stepping up and working to, uh, to build us a facility that matches and kind of meets with the, the vision of what we're trying to do. So I appreciate staff and, and of the property owner for doing that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for an auto display and sales outdoor facility on approximately point-eight-eight-three acres out of the E. Pickett Survey Abstract Number ten-fourteen, located at the southwest corner of South Mill Street and Harvard Avenue at nine-oh-one and nine-oh-three South Mill Street, and Zone General Business District, providing for repealer severability penalty and effective date declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Public hearing number four, consideration of the adoption of the Old Town North Small Area Plan and the Southwest Lewisville Small Area Plan. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council adopt the plans as set forth in the caption. Richard Lukey, Planning Director, is available for any questions.
Any questions at this time?
No, just a, just one comment, uh, I think the small area plan is really great. I know this is one of many to come, but it branches us out and it gives our, uh, areas in our community their own identity. I think that's really gonna be cool, and it's really gonna catch on, and I'm looking forward to it as we expand the program.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion
Both plans.
And a second to approve. Any discussion?
I'm very excited about both of these, uh, these small area plans. Um, I'm so glad to see the residents of those areas, uh, stepping up and taking ownership and, and giving input. Uh, that's, that's what community building's all about, so I'm, I'm, I'm excited that we kind of have the benchmark here and, uh, look forward to seeing what those neighborhoods do.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Visitor Citizen Forum, at this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. We have Christopher Nelson that would like to speak before the council. Christopher Nelson, you have five minutes, and if you'll please state your name and address.
Good evening. Hey, good evening. My name is Christopher Nelson, I live at two, four Two-Tube Mullins. I've been in Lewisville for about seven and a half years. My wife has roots that go back about forty, fifty years. So, nothing, nothing bad, I'm just, uh, the year's halfway done. I have a few suggestions and comments for the council.
Okay.
First, uh, condolences to you, Mr. Don, on your nephew.
Thank you.
Uh, we have our differences, but people are people and family is family. Congratulations to Mr. Ferguson. Just want to note, you almost lost the election because your opponent was at the polling stations. So people that didn't have a decision one way or the other, she had an advantage. We'd like to see you around more. Thank you, but Thank you, but, but thanks for serving. It was fifty-fifty who I was gonna vote for. So, just wanna make, see you around a little bit more and realize that we, uh, like the people to talk to occasionally. We don't always come down here and talk to y'all. I want to thank the city for better notices on events downtown. It makes it a lot easier to plan. Uh, it's, uh, the events and the city staff have really done their job on giving us notice when things are gonna happen and not shutting down too early and picking up very fast. I appreciate that. That's been one of my peeves, and the city's done a wonderful job the last year. Um, code enforcement is doing a great job. Some of the issues I've had the last couple of years, they seem to be going away. Code enforcement staff, they're doing good. Keep on the good work. Um, some, some things. Um, I know there's additions. We're spending a lot of money on one-twenty-one. I know some of that goes from a grant, the Business One Twenty-One Beautification Program. My suggestion is we could've done better with, um, better litter pickup and some safety. One thing I'd like to see there, if it hasn't already been planned, is if you go down eleven-seventy-one towards, uh, you know, thirty-five, they have the little ridge of reflectors on the edge of the curbs, makes the curbs really visible at night. What we need on that stretch of road is a little bit more lighting and a little more safety, and that's an inexpensive addition, and you don't have to water it to keep it green. Um... The only other thing, I'm in Old Town. I really like the Old Town Small Plan. I'm in Old Town North. I live just north of College Street. Now, I am seeing some of the same issues that I had when I first moved here. We do have a lot of rental houses. We do have a lot of homeless and vagrants and some people that live on the edge of society. I have informed the city that we're having drug trafficking in the area again. I've told our NRO and our code enforcement officer. Um, hopefully, they'll respond to me, but I just emailed them a couple of days ago, so it's, I know it's a holiday week. But I just wanted to let y'all aware. You can make all the plans, but you gotta get after these people. The, your police knows who they are. We can tell them who they are. It's obvious. It's in the open. It's, they're easy to spot. There's also been some prostitution in the area. Go, uh, so I've also informed them of that. So, not anything big, not anything open, but if you're a resident, you see it. So, just wanna keep y'all informed. I'm working with the city staff. Hopefully, get some response back on that. Uh, one other side note, I hate to see Old Town Meat Market go, but I know y'all have big plans for the city, and, uh, it didn't work out with them. I'm gonna miss them, but I'll visit them at their new location. Not everything goes the way we want, but y'all guys are doing good, and hopefully, I'll see you in six months and give you your end re, end of the year report at, from a citizen aspect. Appreciate your job.
Okay.
Take care.
Thank you.
Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. May I have received no cards?
Okay.
Move, move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve. No discussion on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Agenda item nine, consider, tabled item. Consideration of a variance to section six dash one oh three E on nineteen point nine acres located at the northwest corner of Valley Ridge Boulevard and McGee Lane. First Baptist Church has seven driveways along the frontage of McGee Lane and Valley Ridge Boulevard, none of which have deceleration lanes. However, a traffic impact analysis submitted to the city shows that during peak traffic times, the church does not have a negative impact on the abutting roadways. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variances as set forth in the caption above, with the condition that should the church expand to any K tw, through twelve curriculum or other academic school, the site traffic circulation and driveways will be reevaluated, and if required by the city, additional onsite and/or offsite improvements sufficient to mitigate negative traffic impacts will be constructed. David Salmon, City Engineer, is available for questions. We also have Curtis Grand and Terry Green from First Baptist Church available to address any questions.
Okay. Does councillor have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve with the, uh, the, with the variance, with the condition that if the church expands out of the academic that sites, that the site traffic circulation and driveways will be reevaluated at such time.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, uh, with the, uh, uh, conditions on it. Any discussion?
Mayor, uh, just a quick thank you to, uh, staff for wandering out and addressing my concerns, and also to the church for, uh, open communication with staff. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much, and, and thank you for being patient with me. I appreciate it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank y'all.
Item ten, tabled item. Considering an ordinance amending chapter six by making provisions for a park fee and other related requirements, and amending section two dash two oh one by amending the park development fee rate. Based on an evaluation of current level of service and the estimated population growth, staff recommends amending the ordinance, ordinance to include a parkland dedication requirement, a cash-in lieu of land option, and increasing the park development fee to reflect the cost of improving the park system to accommodate the recreation needs of the community. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mayor, may I read the caption?
So, I didn't read. Go ahead.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending chapter six, article two, division two of the Lewisville City Code by making provisions for a park fee consisting of a parkland dedication requirement and a park development fee on residential development and other related requirements. Amending chapter two, article eight, section two dash two zero one by amending the park development fee rate, providing a repealer severpil, severability and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item eleven. Consideration of appointment to the Lewisville High School Incubator Board of Directors. L I S D has requested that the city appoint one council member to the board and another council member as an alternate. The recommendation is that the city council consider the appointments.
Okay. Do we have, uh, a motion to appoint?
Move to appoint, uh, T J Gilmore as the, uh, representative. I'm not sure who would want to be the alternate.
Any volunteers?
And Bob Troyer at the alternate.
There we go.
Okay. Any, uh, further applicants here? Okay?
No, we need a second.
Any discussion? Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank y'all for volunteering on this. Uh, item twelve?
Agenda item number twelve. Consideration of establishing a name at the Multi-Generational Recreation Center. The recommendation is that the city council select the name for the Multi-Generational Recreation Center. I believe Parks Director Stacy Anaya has a presentation to make.
Good.
Councillor, I definitely apologize for our technical problems tonight. I do believe that, uh, the council will be able to see the PowerPoint. I do apologize also to the audience that they will not be able to see it because the screens are not working. Um...
Don, could we watch this on our screen and we could turn this to the...
Can they pull that?
Go that way.
Okay, so, so the council could pull it up on your iPads and watch it, and then we could turn this screen around for the public? Okay, sorry, a change in plans.
Okay.
That work for you, Stacy?
Yeah.
Everybody have it up?
Two twenty eighteen seven.
Yeah.
Yep.
Got it.
Yeah? Yep. Who's luck?
Oh, good, I can hide behind the screen here. You can go hard drive or jump drive.
I know, right? Yeah, let's start at, um, this one eleven. Okay.
You ready to start it?
Yes, sir. We're gonna start on, on slide number eleven with what's in a name. Is that okay? Okay, well, uh, on this item, we're gonna be talking about the options that we've bringing forth to council from our subcommittee for the name of the M G C. And I wish I were taller at some point, right? Sorry. Uh, so, in, back in May, city council appointed a subcommittee to go over some names, um, select some, some logos and some taglines for them to consider for the name of the M G C. A subcommittee of the Youth Action Committee, Twenty Twenty-Five Committee, Parks Board, and City Council were able, uh, to represent each of those, uh, each of those bodies to come up with a name. On June eleventh, we met and we narrowed the, the, uh, uh, list from twenty-nine names down to two. And then on June twenty-sixth, we met with a consultant and looked over logos for each of those names, selected two logos, uh, to go with each of the respective names and some taglines. So, what's in a name? A reminder that the Multi-Generation Center is not the name of the center. It's a descriptor of what it is. Uh, and we want to create a meme, a memorable name, something that will spark interest in the center, something that will help us market the center, and something that will help us create a brand for the center and the participants who go there. Uh, we want the name to encompass the spirit of the facility and to really, um, connect with its essence. And that goes back to how we designed the facility. If you remember, um, for, through presentations, we talked a lot about how we would integrate, uh, Lewisville's natural resources into the design. There are a lot of soft elements in there. You can see the outside from almost any point in the building, um, and we're gonna have a very strong connection to the Valley Vista Nature Park across the road. So, we wanted this name to reflect all of those things. We wanted it to be energetic and alive and not just be something, right? Um, so, that being said, the committee went through, like I said, twenty-nine names and narrowed them down to two, and then looked for a logo that would reflect those two names. And so, the first name that came up was the word thrive. Uh, and that this is someplace that when people get there, we want them to thrive as individuals. We want to thrive as a community. And the logo on top really demonstrates all of the natural resources that we enjoy here in Lewisville. A nice body of water and river. Um, we have got a strong connection to, to forests and the birds, uh, the wind too, you know? Much to grin to my hairdo today, but, um, also in our relationship with the sun, we can get out and play almost three hundred, you know, ten days a year. So, we feel that this, this logo is very, very strong. It represents what the building is. Thrive is very marketable for us in terms of what we can do with fitness programs, with multi-generational programs, uh, arrive and thrives, things like that. Um, going to the next slide, um, demonstrating what the logo, if we put it on the side of the building, how it would look. And then what the logo would look like if we put it on a T-shirt and started moving towards, you know, marketable, um, things like our flyers and, and websites and the like. Uh, the next word we chose and we stuck with rise, uh, this really reflects what the building, uh, kind of demonstrates in the city in terms of rising, uh, up to be one of the premier communities in the D F W area. It reflects the, the, you know, the flight path of birds. We're on the central flyway. And this is a real clean crisp logo design with some, uh, negative space demonstrating the, the flyway zone. And if they'll remember, when we look at our, um, uh, art piece that's gonna go in there, it has a lot of the flyway in there, and so that kind of represents that. Um, this is what the logo would look like on the side of the building if we placed it up here. And this is what the logo would look like on T-shirts, and we start towards marketing things. Now, and I kind of started this conversation back during the workshop. We've done some research on these, these, um, two names. And like I mentioned to city council earlier, you know, when you, you buy a new car, you didn't think anybody had that car, and then you get that car, and everywhere you go, you see that car. Everybody has the same car. It's kind of like what's happening, uh, as we go through this and look at the, look at these names. With thrive, uh, there is a dietary supplement, uh, that's named thrive. There's a, there's a university using it as their tagline. And there are a couple other minor places around the Metroplex that use it as, um, either a tagline or the name of their space. Rise, uh, the same thing. There's a small, uh, group of, 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 uh, special athletes that are disabled athletes that get together and they actually use some of our facilities named rise. And there's also a small, um, private facility in Rockwall named rise, but it's a, it's a Rockwall Indoor Sports and, and Exercise Center. So, we kind of see that, um, around. Uh, but, in essence, both, both names are really good for a public recreation, multi-generational space that we feel connect really well with what we put into the design and what the building will be in the future. Now, we also developed, uh, worked hard to develop two taglines, and we feel that each of the taglines can go with either of the names. So, uh, it could be rise where life gets better or thrive where life gets better. And then the next tagline is, uh, thrive, play together, grow together, or rise, play together, grow together. And we feel those both work very well with each logo. Depending on what city council likes to do, um, today, we'll work those into each of the logos and start, start building our market, marketing strategy, um, for the facility. Um, just to go to my last side, I talked about next steps, which we're, uh, voting tonight on the G M P and additive alternates, which you've already done. Selecting a name, logo, and tagline to move forward. Uh, July sixth and seventh will be our last days of operation at the Senior Activity Center. July ninth through twentieth, we'll have interim operations at the Senior Activity Center at the Community Room. On July sixteen, Burn, Burn begins to move into the site to start construction. On the twentieth, we'll have a groundbreaking, and we hope that everybody can join us at ten A M that morning. And then on the twenty-third, the Senior Activity Center will start operations for the interim time at the Music City Mall. We're excited about that. And then July through August, we'll spend developing a marketing plan for this facility so that we can start reaching out to, one, potential sponsors who might work with us on, on funding some of the stuff indoors or getting corporate memberships and family memberships and the like. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
How do you want to handle this?
So, Mayor and councillor, we presented two options, so it might be best for you to first, uh, focus on the name and then, um, the tagline after that.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, we'll start with you. Do you have any comments?
I, I, one, I appreciate all the work they've gone through, so, and, uh, I, I think both names would work, but I'm partial to thrive.
I like the logo for thrive better than I like the thrive, but I'm not willing, I'm not gonna go down a hill for it. But I think when I look at the building, that's when I kind of look at the rise. It looks a little better. But like I said, I'm ready to go wherever, whichever direction we want to go in.
Councilman Gilmore.
I found that I have a talent for shooting down cool names, and I have no talent for actually creating a replacement name. Thank the committee and everybody who's put all their time and effort into this. And I think at the end of this, both of these are verbs. They both give us action. They both meet those types of requirements. They both look good with either tagline. So, I could be nudged one way or the other, but I think I'd have to lean towards thrive.
So, several thoughts on this. I know Stacy's heard or received by email long earfuls of information. Let's talk about rise first. There's a lot of different possible meanings for rise. I know what we'd like for it to mean, but my first difficulty is that rise can mean a lot of different things. It can mean getting out of bed in the morning, and that's not a very, that's not the image I'm trying to create, but it's actually the image that pops into my head at first every single time I see this word. So, I tend to lose, you know, precisely what we're trying to get to with this word. I flip over to thrive. It's got one definition. It's universal. Going back and forth again with thrive, looking at foreign languages, it either means exactly what we say it means, or it doesn't mean anything. The word doesn't translate. They don't have the word thrive in their language. Rise has several other meanings in other languages. We do have a lot of different cultures here. In Czech, it means an empire. In Italian, it can mean the past tense of to laugh. In other languages, it can mean an uprising or revolt. So, I'm not keen to have somebody misinterpret what the purpose is. A somewhat casual survey done early on with rise, asking what the word would mean on the side of a building that appears to be open for public use with a lobby. The overwhelming answer was that it was a church. So, the word doesn't communicate to me what we're trying to say. Again, to go back to thrive, I don't have these issues. So, just on which word functions, the answer is thrive. The logo, you'll recall, the first round of logos, we looked at rise. I didn't get real excited about him. I did ask for the change in this logo that we have to show a little more energy. The other logos came out for thrive, and I jumped all over the first one that we show here because I think this is our style. This is the kind of thing we want to communicate as a city. So, I'm very much in favor of thrive. I'm very much in favor of this logo.
Okay. Councilman Troyer.
Excuse me. When rise was first presented to the council, I was one of the members that was, well, I didn't like it at all. But after sitting through our committees, our committee meetings, our relooking at the names, rise sort of grew on me. But then when we came to thrive, that sort of just, thrive just grabbed me, and especially this logo. With the change that has been made from what we saw at the last, at our last meeting, I'm definitely for thrive.
Okay, thank you. And I wasn't sure. I don't usually, I don't pick colors. I don't pick names. I'm very creative. But when I did see it represented on the side of the building, it did pop out. So, I'm leaning towards thrive. Does anyone have a motion?
Move to name the new Multi-Generational Center, thrive, and adopt this logo. And then we'll move on and do a second motion for the tagline.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion, second, and a discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thanks for all the work for everybody involved. Okay. Now, what do we do?
We need the tagline now, Mayor.
You what?
We need the tagline now. There's options on the tagline.
This right here. Okay, what about, next be the tagline.
Kind of got a question on this.
Okay.
Why does this rise to the level of council picking? I mean, it'd be like me picking the marketing materials, in my opinion. I mean, you could use both of these.
Well, I think one of the directions that we thought we needed, coming back from the last time that we presented, was that we would have a name and a kind of a marketing scheme, a tagline for how we would move forward with it. We can definitely do that. But I, during the committee meeting, we kind of liked both, and we wanted to get some input from the council on which they, you prefer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would suggest.
Anybody not want to do it?
No, I agree with TJ. I would let them make the best decision on what, if they use both.
That's what I mean by not.
I agree.
Okay. Any problem with that?
I liked them both at the meeting, and I like them both now, so I'm not prepared to choose.
I mean, I see marketing materials regularly where a brochure will have one tagline on one panel. It'll be emphasizing certain things, and another tagline on another panel emphasizing a different aspect. And it just depends on who it's relevant to, right?
Right. It does give us some flexibility, just a little bit behind each one. One of the things that we liked about where life gets better is the idea that we can interchange the word life with different things, where kids get better, where.
Would we have to approve each one of those words?
Excuse me?
Would we have to approve each one of those words if you swapped it out?
No, no, no. It would just be for marketing purposes. It would be good. And then the play together, grow together. I think one of the things that was really important to committee, the committee, was this essence of this is where the entire community comes to play and to grow. And so, I think the word together was pretty important to the committee there. That being said, if you don't want to vote on it, that's fine. We can work, we can roll with the marketing group and have some discussion about that because what will move forward for now will be thrive.
Council, your item really is technically the name of the MGC. So, staff is very glad to move forward with the work on the tagline without your direction.
And I'm more than willing to let Councilman Gilmore vote on every word that he wants to approve.
Okay, if there's, I'll ask for a motion if there's anything about the tagline. I hear none. Okay. What's the next on this?
That's it, Mayor.
Okay. We're going into executive session now?
We need to go back to the.
Okay. We're gonna go back into workshop, which will be open to the public, and then we will go into executive session from there.
We only have what?
We can remain in workshop. And I don't know the words.
We are starting, Mayor, on the rodeo arena. So, Mr. Penkey is going to present his item.
I see it now. I am, I am. So, Mayor and Council, I want to talk to you about Lewisville Rodeo Arena up there on Parkway Drive between Mill and Keely. And it's been a city facility for a long time. For some of you might not be totally familiar with the history of this, just to spend a few minutes talking about some of the history. First of all, of course, it is a home of the Labor Day Rodeo. Lewisville Saddle Club puts that on every Labor Day weekend for three days. And during that, it started in nineteen sixty-five. During that time, they bring in, things on the next slide, I'll leave it a little bit. They bring in between fifteen hundred and two thousand people per night for three nights. So, total about forty-five hundred and six thousand people. Just some scenes there. Earlier this year, we used it for the Fiesta Chara, our first Fiesta Chara. We plan to do it again next year and make this a bigger event for the community. And it was at the rodeo arena. Drew about a thousand people. We think it could probably reach a capacity of about three thousand people at that site. So, here's a little bit of the history. Nineteen fifty-nine, the city purchased some property on Parkway between Keely and Mill Street. Nineteen sixty-two, Lewisville Saddle Club formed and worked out a deal with the city where in nineteen sixty-five, they built the arena. And we had a lease for them to use our property to build their arena, and they held the first Labor Day rodeo in nineteen sixty-five. So, it's been going on every year since then. Now, that lease has been extended or renewed or reworked multiple times throughout the years, periods of three years, five years, eight years. But we are currently in the final half year of our existing lease with the Saddle Club. Nineteen ninety-five, the Lewisville Saddle Club came before city council that year, and they made several maintenance requests. They wanted some upgrades made to the facilities out there. They wanted some painting. They wanted to do some improvements on the bleachers. The bleachers, by the way, were the metal-framed wooden seat bleachers that used to be at the Dallas International Speedway. And they got moved here when the Speedway closed. So, it made some improvements back in nineteen ninety-five, some by us, some by the Saddle Club. Then in two thousand twelve, we identified some significant ADA issues at the site. The bleachers themselves, not ADA compliant. City owns the property, a public event that we are supporting. They needed to be ADA compliant. So, the bleachers needed to be replaced. In addition, there was no ADA parking, and the sidewalks were not adequate either. So, access was a problem. So, at that time, city council approved four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to put in new bleachers, those metal bleachers that are out there now, and also to do parking, including handicapped spots, and to some other pavement. Paving the parking lot that's right there on Keely, and also the sidewalks and so forth. Now, there was some additional money spent beyond this on some sidewalk improvements. It was out of various funds that probably totaled about six fifty for the total project. But this was the amount that primaries for the bleachers and for the paths beneath the bleachers, for that ADA work. So, that's two thousand twelve. Yeah, here's the numbers I was telling you about. These are the bleachers that we own. Just to keep you, and I think it's on the next slide. It is in here in the lease. So, our lease now was signed in April of two thousand thirteen. It expires December of two thousand eighteen. In that, the Saddle Club pays us a base rent of thirty-five hundred dollars. And in exchange of that thirty-five hundred dollars, they get exclusive rodeo-related use for up to thirty days during the year. That includes the Labor Day rodeo and all the practice leading up to that. That includes their monthly play dates where the members go out there, you know, twenty to thirty horse trailers plus horses and people, and get out there and have some practice, some fun, some socializing. So, up to thirty days a year. If they go beyond thirty days for rodeo-related use, they pay us a hundred and fifty dollars, pardon me, a hundred dollars a day for those additional days. Has not happened in my time here. Thirty days has been more than enough. The city does get to have events there. They give us a schedule in December, early January, what they want for that calendar year. We get to approve the schedule. Any non-scheduled days, we can put an event there if we choose to. Now, we have not done that because of what's gonna be of the very next paragraph. We've not done that really except for a couple of occasions. We did have a filming of a TV show called Food Truck Wars that was held at that location. And we had the Fiesta Chara earlier this year. The rodeo also, the Saddle Club can lease or bring in a sublease, a user. And they brought in a dog show a couple of years ago. But there's not been a lot of use other than the Saddle Club and the High School Rodeo Club that we'll chat about in a minute. So, under the lease, the Saddle Club owns and maintains the ticket booth, the concession stand, the chute, the pins, the arena fence, the announcing stand, the accessory buildings, the sand in the arena, and the sign on Mill Street. So, everything above the ground except for the bleachers, they own. We own the ground. We own the paving, and we own the perimeter fence. That's ours.
And the bleachers.
I thought I said bleachers. So, okay, bleachers. We own the bleachers. We own the paving, and we own the perimeter fence. But they own the rest of the buildings, the rest of the fixtures there. And just a little note here, their lease also requires they put at least ten riders in our city parades, the Camp Drive Parade and the Christmas Parade. It's a nice thing that they do. People love to see the horses there. So, that's the lease as we have it now. Expires in two thousand eighteen. Things started to change in two thousand sixteen. That particular year, they had a couple of issues. On one night, when there was a senior city staff member present to witness it and tell us, fix this, and we have, they had an injury to a horse, and the horse ended up being put down. And they had one horse that was spooked and ran toward the arena fence, and there was, now, I know it's not chicken wire. It's called no-climb wire, something like that. Whatever it is, the horse didn't see it, ran right through the wire and into the runway between the arena fence and the bleachers. And actually stepped on one child's foot. Fortunately, no major injuries, but a minor injury. Could have been far worse than what happened. But it was bad enough that we went in there and said, okay, guys. We actually met with them that week and said, there's gotta be a few changes made here. So, February two thousand seventeen, we gave them a list of repairs and upgrades that had to be made before the two thousand seventeen rodeo was held. A lot of that was about electric wiring. We also had some concerns about the safety of the announcing stand, the stairs, and the building itself, some concerns about the lighting, and about the fencing. Some places, the fencing needed to be painted. Some places, the wells were bad. Some places, the fencing just needed to have, for instance, the wire that was keeping the horses in was not keeping the horses in. Put in something that will. They made a lot of those. The highest priority items, the things that had to be done to have a rodeo, were completed by the Saddle Club before the two thousand seventeen rodeo. So, we held that event in two thousand seventeen. There were still other repairs we knew needed to be made, but at least they got enough done they could have the rodeo in two thousand seventeen. Two thousand eighteen, the Saddle Club came to us and said, we know there's a lot of other repairs that need to be made. We don't have the money to do all those repairs. There's just so many repairs. We don't have the money to do it. Can the city help with this? And we explained that you own the fixtures and the buildings. We cannot spend city money to fix your property. We can fix our bleachers. We can fix our pavement and our perimeter fence. And we can maintain the earth itself, but everything else, you've got to be able to do. So, they asked what other options there were, and we pointed out that when the lease was renegotiated back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, we suggested then the possibility that they turn over to us all of those fixtures and buildings and equipment, and we would take over maintenance of it. That's one of the biggest reasons we don't have city events there, is because we don't own those fixtures. And some of them are not in the best of shape. And so, we are very concerned about having an event there using their equipment that we don't maintain, we don't own. If something were to happen, we could be liable or could be liable for that. So, we pointed out to them that that was something that was discussed five years ago. The Saddle Club said, no, they didn't want to. And about a week later, the Saddle Club voted, the board voted unanimously, to ask us if they could turn over all of that to us. So, that's where we are right now. After that, we had city staff from multiple departments, from public services, from neighborhood services, from animal services, all the various services, went out there to inspect the rodeo arena, a really detailed, in-depth inspection. And they identified repairs and upgrades that needed to be made. One, before the rodeo could be held this year. There's some additional items that need to be done for this year's rodeo to be held in a safe manner. And other items that also really need to be addressed if the arena's going to continue being used on a long-term basis. Now, the total cost of all that, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's a pretty big-ticket item, so staff went back, and we prioritized. And we've got an immediate needs list, a short-term needs list, and we'll say long-term needs list, although long-term, in our case, is still a relatively short period of time. Here's two of the biggest areas you see right here. The arena, the announcing stand right here, needs roof work, needs a lot of wood replacement. We're still a bit concerned about the stairs. Needs some carpentry work to make that usable and safe. And then the concession stand here, now, this is from about four years ago, and they used it that year. They've not used it the past couple of years. They bring in food trucks now. And the concession stand is not in a condition where we feel is appropriate to be used for events there. I will tell you that these, you can probably get around. Keep bringing food trucks and just don't use this building. As long as it stands, I don't use it, you can work around it. This here, we, on the dressment, we found a workaround for, but it's a very temporary workaround. So, here's your immediate needs. Everyone's the arena sand. Remember, we own the ground. They own the sand in the arena. And in many areas, in almost the entire arena, it is less than six inches deep. That's just not safe for the horses. We can't say for sure that's why the horse had the injury two years ago, but it seems very likely. That's why the horse was injured and had to be put down. So, we recommend getting rid of the sand that's there, bringing in all-new sand and leveling it out, including drainage provisions, for a cost of forty-five thousand dollars for the arena sand. Number two is the fencing. Now, when we talk about fencing here, this is not talking about the fence around the arena itself. This is talking about the other fencing, in particular, the fencing that keeps the public and the arena separated. That fence and other fences along the area need to be replaced. These are, in many areas, safety issues. We want to get rid of that no-climb fencing and put in something appropriate. Put in new metal, more metal, better metal, and then solid metal along the bottom so that it creates an additional barrier, kick plate, if you will. And in addition, raising the level of the fence to what's current standards are. In the corals, the fences are too low. And a horse might not be able to jump over it, but the horse might think it can and can try. So, we want to get those higher so that they are safer for the animals and participants. That's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Third item here is the announcing stand. I mentioned earlier, it needs some carpentry work, about thirty-five thousand dollars of carpentry work. And then electrical wiring and lights. This is the biggest safety concern we have out there. The original wiring has been upgraded and replaced and added to and just rigged in various ways. various ways over the past 50 years. And in many areas, we just do not believe that it is safe to use that wiring. That's the wiring that runs the lights more than anything else. When we had the Fiesta Chara, we did not use their wiring. It was not a nighttime event, so we didn't need the lights, and we just brought in our own generator to run the announcing and to run anything we need, brought in a generator, did not use their power, did not use their announcing stand either. This wiring, it all needs to be replaced. There are a couple of light poles that you probably could get by with keeping for a while longer, a few years maybe, but all the rest need to be replaced, so our suggestion was go ahead and replace them all. It's only a $25,000 difference at that point. We don't think it's appropriate to just leave two old ones because we can, and then a couple of years later got to replace them at a higher price. So our recommendation here is the 2015 to replace all of that. Now, here's why I mentioned a workaround. Special events looked at it, this is a lot of work to be done, you've got a total here of $425,000 of immediate needs. Special events looked at it, and we could have them do with the rodeo the same thing that we did at Fiesta Chara, which is bring in a, you build a scaffolding for a temporary announcing stand, and you bring in generators and temporary light poles. That could work. It's not the ideal solution, it creates some other challenges such as noise, for example, but it can be done. That'd be about $20,000 if we were to do it. If we had to do it this year, we could, we certainly don't recommend that long-term, we don't think it's sustainable over time. So 425, you do everything on the immediate needs list, or 175, not counting the $20,000, we would get that out of the events budget, 175 if it's just the sand and the fencing. Takes us to short-term needs, you'll see again, the fencing and the wa, oh, that's different. You'll see again the announcing stand and the wiring are back in there. If they didn't get done in the immediate needs, they pop back in in short-term needs, because they need to be done pretty quickly. The new item here is the arena fencing, that's the fence actually around the arena, imagine the animals are doing their thing. And that also needs to be pretty much replaced throughout. I'll give you an example, in one place, our park staff looked and said, "Hey, this weld here is bad, needs to be replaced." And they looked at it and said, "Of course, that steel probably can't hold that well, so I've got to replace the steel too." And it just grew from there. So we've got a $100,000 price tag to make that arena fence meet current safety standards. So again, here, if it's just that, then the short-term needs, $100,000. If we deferred these two items, then it's more. If we deferred those two items, then it's 350. And then finally, long-term needs, there's two. One is concession stand, and one is restroom buildings, and they're actually tied together. And I'm going to start with restroom building, just because it leads nicely to the other. We've talked in the past about restrooms being a good thing to put out there. Right now, we're bringing in portlets for all the events, and for a rodeo, that can work. It's not ideal, but it works. But for other events when I bring in, it's not necessarily the best solution. Something more permanent would be more appropriate. However, there's no sewer line on that side of the road. The only sewer connection runs under Parkway from the south side of Parkway to the north side of Parkway, correct? That's a four-inch line, and it goes to the concession stand. So we would have to put in a whole new sewer connection. There's, I think, a 10-inch line or eight or 10-inch line on the south side of Parkway. We have to tie off of that and bring a whole new line. That's pretty cost-reduvative to put in restrooms that might not be used more than a dozen, two dozen times a year. So we've not really moved on that. The concession stand, we believe, needs to be removed. And the removal on that is only $10,000. Needs to be removed. If that gets removed, then the sewer and water hookups that have been used for the concession stand now are available for use in the restrooms. And we believe that those connections are sufficient for a prefab building with 12 stalls. That'd be six men, six women's. And I'll give you a comparison, right now, the rodeo brings in 12, uh, 10 portlets. They bring in 10 portlets. For Fiesta Chara, we brought in eight portlets. So 12 is slightly more than what's been available previously. We also know from past experience that if people at an event see only portlets, some of them will just wait until they get home or get somewhere else. They see a permanent restroom, they're more likely to use it. So what you see at events, State Fair has seen this, and other events, if there's permanent restrooms, they get more use than the same number of portlets would. So if we're going to replace eight to 10 portlets, 12 stalls and a permanent probably is an equivalency. Ultimately, and Keith, catch me at this if I'm incorrect, it might be better to just build from the ground up on that slab, if the slab's in good shape and it fits the space and fits the size, it might be better just to build instead of doing the prefab. But we think the cost would still be about $300,000. So either way, we think about $300,000. So you put these two together, that's $310,000. Can the arena function without these? Yes, it can, but these are limiting factors in what uses you can bring into that facility. So here's the total, this is your total price tag, broken down by immediate, short-term, and long-term, we put these two items under immediate, because that's our recommendation. Total is the 835 you see right there. There's other considerations beyond just the 835, even though 835 obviously is something to think about. First is a small-area plan, you approved it tonight, the small-area plan for Old Town North. A big part of that plan addresses this site, especially the west end of this site over by Mill Street, and also the creek as a greenway, a greenbelt, possible trail. So anything we do with the rodeo arena, could we have an impact on the small-area plan ideas? So whatever we do, we need to make sure that we're not creating a situation where we can't do what the residents said they wanted because we did something else. We believe that it can be compatible, but it's just something we have to consider while we're doing the work. Future maintenance, if we take on the ownership of those fixtures, even though we put in new stuff, it's going to be easier to maintain, that is going to be a responsibility of the Parks Department. That's going to impact their staff. It's going to impact their staff to the tune of about $15,000 a year for mowing and for trash collection. So there is an impact on parks. Louisville Saddle Club lease, we're going to have to do a new lease no matter what. If the city takes over ownership of those fixtures and facilities, then the lease would just be for them to come in and use it. It would strictly be a rental, facility rental, just like we have an MCL brand or like we might have at the community room. Be a facility rental that would have what their rent is to us and what they're allowed to use it for and everything else, just be a standard lease. If we don't do this transfer and they continue to exist, then the lease would still be basically what it is now, they still have maintenance responsibility that they say they cannot meet. In addition, we would make one other change in the lease. Right now, we pay $10,000 out of the hotel fund in support of the rodeo, that's marketing money, that we give to them and applies to that event. That's not in the lease, that's through a separate agreement, we would codify that in the lease, just put everything into a single document. High School Rodeo Club. So there's a high school rodeo club that includes students from Louisville and Marcus High Schools. They're fairly active, there's, last time I talked, there's like 30, 35 students, it's probably about that same number. The high schools do not have a rodeo arena, and in fact, it is not a school-sanctioned event, just like wrestling and gymnastics used to not be school-sanctioned, now they are. Hockey now is not, rodeo is not. And as a result, they are not covered under school district insurance. And obviously, rodeo is a sport where you want to have good insurance. So they worked around that by having a deal with the Saddle Club where they got a discounted membership for all of their students, and that membership, by becoming a member of the Saddle Club, whenever they were using the arena, they were covered under the Saddle Club insurance. Saddle Club really does not want to continue that arrangement. The High School Rodeo Club would like to continue that arrangement, but we don't know they're going to be able to work that out. So it is to be aware that if they're going to use our facility, they've got to have insurance of some sort. It's not covered from LISD, it's either they've got to provide it or make a deal with the Saddle Club. And that's really kind of on them, but you'll hear about this if we move forward.
But that's a requirement for anybody using the facility.
Anybody using it would have to provide insurance, absolutely. So it's not something that's just for them. The difference is, if, let's say, the LHS ban wanted to come and use the rodeo arena for a marching drill, they're covered by school district insurance because they are a sanctioned school organization. Rodeo Club is not.
But it's Louisville, or, um, it's the Saddle Club that wants to get rid of this arrangement, right?
The Saddle Club, that might change, well, no, it probably won't. The Saddle Club was looking at how do they cover their costs for maintaining the facility? And they were trying to find a way to raise money while their membership has been in decline. And their thought was, instead of charging the discounted rate, you should pay the full membership rate. High School Rodeo Club said, "That's too much, we're not using it that much, we shouldn't have to pay the full rate." They went back and forth, we thought we had brokered an agreement between the two of them, and it fell apart. So it's possible that we can get them to broker a deal, especially if the rodeo club, pardon me, the Saddle Club, is no longer having to maintain the arena, then they might be more amenable to it, we just don't know at this point if they're going to be open for that. Programming, if you're going to spend $835,000 on top of the $650 you paid before, that's 1.48, 475 million, it's almost one and a half million dollars. If you're going to put that kind of money into the facility, we need to use it more than just the Labor Day rodeo. Fiesta Chara has got an opportunity to grow, we think there's other things that could be done there. We've actually been speaking with the owner of Johnson Feed, who's a retired Louisville firefighter, and he would like to work with us to bring in a couple of activities there that would be pretty low-impact, pretty low-cost, especially if he's able to come through with the contacts that he has. One of them would be a high school stock show type of activity, the other is possibly an amateur barrel racing event that he'd like to see out there. That would be four events a year, plus the play dates, I wouldn't count as an event that are not open to the public. We think that's a good foundation, but it's something that staff's going to spend some time looking at this, how do we activate that facility? And not just have a facility sitting there that you've invested in that's not being used. If you're going to spend money on it, we need to find a way to use it. I can't guarantee we'll succeed, but we're going to try. We're going to look at it as closely as we can. We want to be careful not to have a negative impact on the neighborhood on the south side of Parkway. Right now, the rodeo happens three times a ye, three days a year, and they do have some parking issues there, our police department's aware of that, and he goes out there and works with them. For the Fiesta Chara, we actually working with police and with facilities, pardon me, public services, we blocked off Parkway on the Keeleys, on the Mill side, only allowed people in on the Keeley side. And we also have a remote parking in City Hall. And we, police were touring the neighborhood very carefully, we talked to the residents ahead of time, they were very nervous ahead of time. Afterward, they reported no complaints. So we think it's manageable of a crowd up to about 3,000 people if we have off-site parking. Parking's always going to be an issue there. But if we start having something there every single weekend with the lights on and sound blaring and people driving up and down the street, those residents are not going to be happy with us either. We've got to find a balance there, and that's going to be part of our challenge. And then finally, city insurance, anytime we own a building, we insure it. Owning all, not just the land and the fence and the bleachers, but adding the other fixtures, that will increase our premium for the building insurance itself. We're not sure exactly how much, because it depends on how much, how valuable that property is after we make all these improvements and fixes. Also, we'll have some increased liability insurance, about $3,000 next year for, on our liability coverage. Anybody renting it, as we mentioned earlier, will have to provide liability insurance before we let them in. And then finally, staff has identified ways in which this 835 can be funded. Here's the list that we've come up with at this point. This impacts your Parks Development Fee Fund, this affects your 4B Fund, both ongoing and reserve, and also affects your REC Fund CIP. So none of these are specifically appropriated to real, in-your-hands projects, but spending this money here could negatively impact some projects that we'd like to do in the next couple of years, it might slow them down a little bit, might delay them some. And as you know, anytime you pull money out of a pot and put it somewhere else, that leaves a little bit less in that pot for what you were planning to do. So there are impacts to it, but the money is available for whatever level you choose to do. Which brings you to your decision points, we've got three of them for you. First is, are you interested in taking ownership of this facility from the Saddle Club? That would be the buildings, the fixtures, the equipment. Doing so would mean investing money in repairs. So if you do, we're going to create a capital project and find out for you how much you're willing to spend on these needs. All 835, just the first one, 42, we need to find that out. And then finally, what timing do you like? Do you want to just get it all over with at once, rip the Band-Aid and move on? Do you want to stagger it over a few years? You've got those options available to you. I will let you know one thing, the rodeo arena right now is not in a condition in which the rodeo can be held this year. There has to be those repairs. At the very least, the sand has to be done, and the, and the, not the arena fencing, but the rest of fencing, those two things have to be done before our Neighborhood Services inspector is going to be uncomfortable saying, "Yes, you can have the rodeo there."
Which means we need to start like tomorrow.
It means, I think Keith already told his guys, we're probably going to start tomorrow to figure out how to get this done. In fact, I think he told them they'd start tonight.
I've got one of them here.
There we go. You're ready, right? You're ready. So essentially, it comes down, and the Saddle Club has told us, they are not able to pay this money. They don't have it, and they don't feel like they can get it. So it sounds unfair, and it really is in many ways, an unfair decision for you, but if we don't do this, no one else is available to do it, and there will not be a rodeo. So with that, with that wonderful sunshiny news, I want to be excited like Stacy, but I can't be excited. Here is what it is. Are there any questions I can try to answer for you?
I think you just did with the timeline, because I know when I saw the $835,000, my eyes got big silver dollars and like, you know, and I was thinking about the parking issues. I mean, it's all seems to be rough decisions here.
Certainly, the location has real limitations that can't be fixed, no matter how much money we spend on it. Parking's one of them. Even the arena itself has certain limitations as to size and doesn't meet certain rodeo standards, so.
Doesn't meet the PBR requirements, which is the big, the big drill.
Which is not fixable.
So what are you recommending?
Well, Council, I'm recommending that you consider either doing some minimal fixes so that we can hold the rodeo, I mean, there's kind of two options here, you could do the minimal fixes, we could hold the rodeo, and then we could step back and consider our options. Or you could direct us to go on and do the, all of the fixes, or certainly thirdly, you could tell us you don't want to do anything with it. And that means we don't have a rodeo this September. We never have a rodeo again.
This year or ever?
Or ever. I mean, it's, it's.
So either one.
Wait, and once you, once you stop the rodeo, those guys are going to put another thing in the schedule, and that's going to be what it is, true.
First, kind of where I'm coming at this from, I mean, living in Louisville for 30 years, one of the things that I've always loved about Louisville is, we're kind of a big city, but it feels like a small town. And everybody I know and everybody I talk to, that's what they say about Louisville, "We're still a small town, you know, we still have the Homecoming Parade and the Holiday Stroll and all those things that keep us a small town that I think people love about living in Louisville." And granted, I've been to the rodeo three times in the last 10 years, but to me, the rodeo, the Homecoming Parade is one of those things that keeps that small-town feel that I think is unique that other cities don't have. And I know it's a large amount, I mean, when you look at the $800,000, but when you look at that, how that could be split over 15 to 20 years of use, it really is not that big a price over a 15-year, 20-year time period that we'd be able to use those facilities and be able to get that use out of those facilities. You know, when you put it at that price tag, we'd probably be looking for events that, to fill it, that we would have no assurance that they would even catch on or that they would do, and we may be chasing things that wouldn't have this appeal that I think so many people in Louisville love. And I think that we could probably look at this, I mean, we don't need to build a concession stand. I mean, how do you do a concession stand that operates five days a year? Makes no sense to me. And even though I'm not a big supporter of food trucks, they wouldn't compete with restaurants. It's a perfect time to use those and if it's in. And the other things that we can use this for, whether it's barrel racing, the Chara event, and other things, I think we would get our money out of it. But to me, more than anything, I think it's, it's, it's part of the roots of Louisville that I think so many citizens like myself, we don't wanna lose. We don't wanna become South Lake or Coppell that they don't have a rich, vibrant, fighting farmer history. I, I, I think it's something we keep. I think we plan on doing it and doing it the right way and not spending money on Band-Aids and then having to come back and correct the Band-Aids that we put after it. I think we do it, we do it right, and let's make a commitment long-term to this.
Anybody else have anything?
I agree with everything he said. I guess I'm, I'm, if we're gonna, if we do it, we go all the way and do it.
Now, we gotta work with, first of all, just making it ready for the Labor Day.
Yeah, we will have to have a plan. Obviously, we can't get everything done by September, but certainly we'll be able to phase it so that we're not wasting any funds. And then we'll, the restrooms certainly will probably come last.
Okay, Brandon?
My, my only question, I'm, if we're gonna do the, the media being so it's, it's fine before, for the holiday, that's fine. But I'm, what I'm thinking is future use, because it's unlimited. I know we've talked about the rodeo before, parking and all that. Is that the best location for it long-term? I'm not trying to get rid of rodeo. I'm just looking at that location and it's so compact that they can't, they can't bring the horse, horse trailers there. So I'm just thinking, if we're going to do this long-term, is this the best spot? And that's the only thing I'm, I mean.
I will say right now, it's not.
That's right.
We, we need to be in another place.
So if we're going to, if we're going to invest in this, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but maybe we should take, take a step back and, and look at it and say, what's the best location so the neighbors don't, our neighbors don't get mad? We can, we can have it, I mean, temporarily fix this stuff to kind of go in the meantime, but if we're gonna do this, we need to think of a better spot than this.
So, so Council, the decision point there would be, how much do you wanna spend? Because a better spot is gonna drive the purchase of the rodeo.
Sure.
And we looked at Railroad Park, we don't think there's any place at Railroad Park to put it. I don't know of any city-owned property today that would work for the, for the rodeo. So, I mean, the decision there is, how much do you wanna spend? And then you're starting to give them to probably a debt program. To buy land and build a, you know, a first-class facility, we're talking about a lot more money.
Well, does anybody have a problem with doing a stopgap to get going just for the, for this Labor Day?
No.
No problem. And that's, that's number one right there. And we'll just see what we can do.
So then the direction would be to do what it takes to just get it operational for the rodeo and then to bring you back.
And make it safe.
Make it safe, and then to bring you back options for the future? What I'm hearing?
Two things to, I'd like staff to maybe look at. One is, we've just done the Mill North Neighborhood Plan. Guess where this is? And it, it could be a real anchor corner to that community. It's not really addressed in the plan, but there's some.
Park setting.
There's some emphasis there. And to dovetail onto that is, how do you make that more attractive to the neighbors when it's being used for something else while you allow it to be a usable park space in those times when it's not? And I don't, I, I know that's asking a lot out of a very little piece of property, but if we can explore ways to make that more usable year-round just as a, as a neighborhood park, that might be.
Which is the direction of 2020 or the smaller area plan? And 2025?
That, that would, that would, that would make me feel better about investing in the space.
But when you talk about options for the future, you mean at this location or other locations as well?
I mean, we'd have to do a cost analysis. You said it's gonna cost more, but we need to see, we're gonna spend almost a million dollars on this and everything. I read all those problems are pretty substantial, you know, and it may cost more, but which, which is better in the long-term? Because you're still gonna have, the neighborhood's gonna get more dense, more people coming in. The traffic is gonna get heavier as we get more people that live in Old Town, and that's gonna become more and more of a problem and squeeze against that, against that location of the rodeo. So I mean, it's gonna cost more, but if it's like astronomical, we have to reconsider. I just want options, that's all.
The one thing I hate to do though is, I mean, I think the low end was, what, 125 or 75?
175 if we just do the.
I mean, we're a quarter, we're almost a quarter of the way of doing it, so then we're just kinda throwing out money.
But, but I think, James, that we could do it just like Chara, which would be less than 175.
No, the 175 would actually be just for these first two items, the sand and the fencing. And then the other items, the announced standing wiring, we would spend $20,000 out of the events fund to, for stopgap. So 175 is just for these two items.
So then we're spending another 20,000 to Band-Aid it. So we're spending a quarter of the price to Band-Aid it. I mean, I, I mean, are we better off? I mean, yes. Is there better locations? Absolutely. We all know that. There's better locations for so many things we do. But, I mean, to me, you're already a quarter of the way there. Why don't we go with a long-term investment and do it?
I think the problem's gonna be is that the short-term is not, the short-term is have to items. Safety and then, and so we're, it's not like, it's funny, we have to, to operate in September.
Right, and what I'm saying is, if we spend the 200,000, are we gonna go then in October and go, well, let's quit it now? We just put 200,000 into it, you know, into it. It seems then kind of like that was, 200,000 for one rodeo seems like a waste of money. 800 and something thousand for 15, 20-year rodeos in the future, sounds like a good deal.
Our option would be not to have it right now.
I, I'm not willing to make that option. I don't know if the other councilmen are, but I'm not willing to say no.
Yeah, I think that, that's the option right now. We're gonna have to make this safe for the participants, for the animals, and for the spectators.
And we were trying to do all of the, you know, the construction projects so that perhaps some of it could be reused if we were to come up with a new location. I know that the stands, when we selected those particular stands, they can be taken apart, they're movable, so.
And the, the prefab restroom, I'm assuming, could be relocated?
Well, we probably would make that decision, yeah. We just do the very fundamentals.
Right.
And we're not talking about, to build a new facility, we're not talking about 800,000. We're talking about 35, maybe.
Oh, I would say at least.
Down.
But you, you start making decisions, is it still an outdoor facility or now is it an indoor facility?
That's an easy one.
So you're, you're starting to hit on my thoughts, which is, first of all, I'm with you, $200,000 for one rodeo. If I must spend $200,000 for one rodeo, I need to be asking myself what I'm doing. And at the same time, I'm not willing to cancel this rodeo, so I'm committed to the 200,000. If I start buying land and saying, let's move it someplace else, I'm not gonna get more rodeos necessarily. There's only so many rodeos to be had in a year. So the question is, how do I get a return on investment for another location? And the answer is to be able to do more with it. Well, to be able to do more with it, I have to make it bigger. It's probably advisable to make it covered so I can utilize it more times in the year, possibly enclosed. You know, where do you stop? Where do you go? I don't know. And that's a whole different game. In fact, at that point, I'd be saying, well, just go ahead and do the rodeo and let's consider what we want for some, you know, event center as a separate project. So I'm not keen to go out and reproduce this on another piece of property slightly larger because I don't think the, the return on investment's there. I don't think the utilization is there.
Okay. Anybody else have anything before we get above 10 million?
Thank you, yes.
I wanna stay at 800,000 or something.
I mean, if you say it 800,000, Council, you will have a nice, small-town rodeo. And, and that's the tradition here. It works. You get a steady crowd of 2,000 people.
To spend 800,000, what kind of timeframe are we talking?
To do the whole thing? Keith, do you have a feel for that?
I'd have to figure out the lead time on that restroom, whether we wanted to do the prefab or whether we make more space to build it.
I guess the question is, would this be for 18 or the Labor Day of 19?
We could not get all of this done by.
We can, we can make it safe for 18. The restrooms and some of the bigger type elements of the project, we have to come out of.
So if you go with a long-term in mind, we could probably get more of it done than trying to Band-Aid and then come back and redo.
What we did get done would be done well and permanent and if we knew it was gonna go forward.
And that makes sense.
Something that we could even repurpose it sometime in the future.
You know, does it become a food truck yard? Does it become, you know, I mean.
I have a question.
Restrooms specifically. So if we're going to build restrooms, part of the limiting utilization, and we talked about some of the other options for just the, the parking area, the grassy area, is that if you're gonna build restrooms, it would be nice to have access to the restrooms for that purpose too, but be able to close that access off to the remainder of the arena. In other words, be able to split the facility in half if you want to. Can you set up your restrooms so that they can be available to using only the grassy area or available to using the full facility?
We'll have to look at it, but possibly.
Okay, 'cause I think if you're going to make more use of this property, you need that ability. The restrooms are kind of a missing function here for every use.
So they support the park and they support the neighborhood.
Yes.
Do you all have enough things to, on your plate right now?
Well, I'm, I'm a little confused right now.
Okay.
So, so I heard kind of two things. One was to bring you back options and to just get it ready for the September 18 rodeo. But then I heard perhaps we could just get it to the point that it is what it is. It's a small-town rodeo, and I'm not gonna bring you back any options.
I'm gonna, my preference, once again, we go the 835. We go with a long-term in mind. We hope to have a rodeo now for the next 20 years, that we keep it alive and keep that in Louisville. And we go that direction with that in mind, not as a stopgap.
And starting for right now, just work towards the Labor Day.
Right.
To get that part done, the restrooms, tearing down a concession stand.
Whatever they can do to do it right and get it ready for Labor Day.
And make it usable. And do it with the mind that they're gonna go forward.
Long-term.
Yes.
And then I'm not gonna bring you back any other options.
Until we're ready.
I know people.
Till you ask me.
I'd, I'd like to see if we're going to be doing this, I'd like to see us design